I'd like to welcome you to the town of Powell, select board meeting. Um, on September fourteenth, two thousand twenty-three, six oh one, six oh two P M., sorry. Uh, they could call the meeting order. Board member roll call.
Angie Rowling.
Bob Jarvis.
Brian Harris, Mike Gardner. Please have everyone rise, please, for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone.
Looks like the video isn't on.
Hey, there we go. Okay, approval of the agenda. Uh, public comment, approval of the minutes, approval of warrants, uh, correspondence, excess weight permits, reappraisal discussion, updates from town officials, right away permit discussion and approval, welcome to Powell, my sign replacement, public comment, executive contractual, executive personnel, excuse me, public comment and adjournment.
Do we have to add or change anything?
I don't have any additions or changes.
Then so moved.
Seconded.
Um, any discussion? All those in favor?
Angie, aye.
Bob, aye.
Brian, aye.
Mike, aye. Um, I'm gonna try to go into my laptop in the work office, but I got my paper back up. I'd like to open up public comment now, please. There is any? Nobody in here?
No, it's.
Okay, approval of minutes, minutes of August twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-three, select board meeting.
So moved.
Seconded.
Uh, any discussion? All those in favor?
Angie, aye.
Bob, aye.
Brian, aye.
Mike, aye. Warrants, accounts payable, September first, two thousand twenty-three, fifty-one thousand eight hundred and eighteen dollars and twenty-one cents.
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Angie, aye.
Bob, aye.
Brian, aye.
Mike, aye. Accounts payable, September eighth, two thousand twenty-three, ten thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars and thirty-seven cents.
So moved.
Seconded.
Any discussion, questions? All those in favor?
Angie, aye.
Bob, aye.
Brian, aye.
Mike, aye. Accounts payable, September fifteenth, two thousand twenty-three.
So moved.
Seventeen thousand four eighty-nine nineteen.
Sorry.
A little early.
So, sorry, so moved.
Wait a second. Any questions, discussion? All those in favor?
Angie, aye.
Bob, aye.
Brian, aye.
Mike, aye. Payroll, September first, September first, two thousand twenty-three, eleven thousand seventy-eight dollars and ninety-six cents.
So moved.
Seconded.
Any questions, discussion? All those in favor?
Angie, aye.
Bob, aye.
Brian, aye.
Mike abstained. Payroll, September eighth, two thousand twenty-three, ten thousand three hundred and sixty dollars and thirty-eight cents.
So moved.
Seconded.
Any discussion, questions? All those in favor?
Angie, aye.
Bob, aye.
Brian, aye.
Mike, aye. Payroll, September fifteenth, two thousand twenty-three, eleven thousand six hundred and sixty-five dollars and thirty-seven cents.
So moved.
Seconded.
Any questions, discussion? All those in favor?
Angie, aye.
Bob, aye.
Brian, aye.
Mike, aye. Um, correspondence?
We don't have any today.
No correspondence, okay. Excess weight permits?
We have one from M K Tro Trucking LLC out of Stanford, and it's a fleet, and it's already been signed off by Joel.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Angie, aye.
Bob, aye.
Brian, aye.
Mike, aye. Which brings us right into our reappraisal discussion.
Would you all like to join us at the table, please?
We have a number of guests on, um, to, um, help us with this reappraisal discussion. I'd like you just to, um, introduce yourself, please, so that we know who's talking and what's going on. If you don't know all of us, so, uh, the floor is yours. Take it away.
Hi, uh, my name's Wendy Jordan. I am the assessor clerk here in town.
I'm Jacob Stoddard, and I am the hired assessor. Uh, work for Nimerick.
And I'm Ed Claude Felter, and the senior appraiser for Nimerick.
I'm David Buckley. I'm a real estate appraiser, uh, approved for mass appraisals.
Thank you.
So.
So I think we had a lot of questions about the need for the appraisal, um, and this was sort of a public discussion because we had a couple of public questions that we didn't really know how to answer.
Okay.
I assume you were under orders.
Yes.
Yeah, you must have just gotten that letter.
Yeah, yes.
Yep.
Um, and you were just on the cusp.
Like point two-two percent over?
Yeah, point three-five.
Yeah, point three-five.
Um, good guess. A little bit of a, little bit of a shift from the state. You know, in the past, they had had, the, the trigger became the common level of appraisal, which was below eighty-five percent, and which you are ninety-four. And, and then the other part of that equation was the common coefficient dispersion greater than twenty, and you're at twenty-point three-five. So I spent all my spring in the legislature, talking with them about they're trying to get rid of the trigger. We successfully got rid of that. But what happened was that they went to a six-year reappraisal cycle. So everybody's gonna reappraise within the six-year timeframe. If they haven't done so by a certain sequence, it'll be, it'll be laid out for towns to do that. Um, and then, but what remained was the trigger for the coefficient dispersion. And so they're gonna stick to their guns pretty much on that. Uh, they're not gonna really deviate from that at all. That's their last, that's their last big stick that they have with the, in the closet, in the corner of property valuation review. They got one big stick, and one of them went away, now they have one left. That's all they got.
Can you tell us what that wording means?
Coefficient dispersion?
Yeah, in the most like layman terms.
Um, it, it's basically when you look at properties that sell and how they're being assessed, it creates, you can create a ratio from that. Then there's what the typical average ratio is for all those. Then when you start looking at all the sales, how far different are they from that average ratio? And so the greater that spread is, the wider the dispersion. And so what that means is that there is inequity built into the grand list. So on average, it means that, in your case, you're twenty percent on average away from what the median ratio would be for the sales within a town in Powell. That gives you a little better perspective. It's really fun when you graph it out. You, you see that graph, what the, what the ratios are, and you'll see this, this range of things that come off of, and you see the dispersion. And you, you get a pretty good idea of why it's a big deal. It's like I told the legislature, I said, I, I can fix your common level issues across the state. I can do those in minutes. But it takes feet on the ground to fix the coefficient dispersion because you've got inequity built in. You've got things that have been, that have happened to the properties or happened to the market. And David, you could jump in here whenever you want. Um, and, you know, things that haven't been picked up, or things that have been removed, or, or condition changes that have taken place, or places that have been assessed on old data and old systems that can't get up to the values high enough, or things that can't get depreciation low enough on them, so dispersion starts to spread. And that's what the C O D represents. It's, it's inequity built into the grand list.
I would, I would disagree slightly. The C O D speaks to the, the, uh, sub-markets that are out of whack. There are different markets. You have like mobile home markets double wide. You have, you have trophy homes, you have starter homes. And the, the gap between your assessments and your, your, uh, sales prices varies radically depending upon the sub-markets. That's why you have these high-end sales that, you know, come in at a million two, and you have an assessed for four hundred thousand dollars. That's what the coefficient dispersion speaks. And it's not good. And your actual G L A is sixty-eight percent. Or C L A, excuse me, not ninety-seven. We did a run of the last eighteen months of your sales and your assessments. You're at sixty-eight percent.
Well, uh, can I ask you a question there?
Sure.
So would you say that that was driven, um, that, that high percentage was driven by the COVID market and, and sales? I think nationwide, sales went crazy on, on certain places, especially out in the country, right? In, in areas, rural areas, like where we are.
I would be a very disagree. It's not crazy. It's real. The, the, the migration to Vermont is real. Now, you're, you're either gonna take the position, well, it's not gonna last very long, and values are gonna go down, or you're gonna look at the last eighteen or two years worth of sales and say, that's probably where we're headed down that road. The only reason it's important to a municipality is if you do your numbers today, you don't want your numbers to be worthless in two years because that market continued to trend up because the way the state does it is based on three-year average. So that, that C L A, or coefficient dispersion, which you're hearing, is not real. It's not real at all because it's taking sales three years ago, possibly even four, and blending them in to the average, falsely telling you that you're in good shape. But when you look at the, the, the transfers and you see the difference between a, a sale and the assessment, you've gotta look at it one of two ways. Well, it's just a stupid sale, forget it. Or that person was crazy, and the next guy's not gonna be as stupid. But that's really the real market. And I can tell you, from working out in the field for the last two years, all over the state of Vermont, it's a real market. If you look at sales on M L S and the days on market, I'm gonna, I'm gonna guess, but I'm gonna guess that the days on market are less than thirty days. The, the demand for, for real estate in Vermont is, is incredible. Vermont is a very special place. It's the second least populated state in the union. And, um, you, you have to, you have to make a decision. Is it, is, is this where we are now? It's gonna continue this way? Or this is just crazy, and it's all gonna go back to the way it was before? I don't think it's gonna. So you need to bite the bullet. It's not, Bob?
Yeah, so I, I've just taken a look at it. I, there's a, um, a, and, and really just questions. Um, uh, we did see a spike in sales, but to your point on time on market, we've had several properties right here in Powell that have dropped price because they haven't been able to sell. Now, this is all anecdotal. I, I didn't do an analysis. I'm just telling you what I see on Zillow and what I see in town. So, uh, it might be, well, yeah, well, hang on. It, it, you know, I, I, what, when I'm looking at properties in town and I know about them, I'm not, uh, you know, when I, so when I say Zillow or whatever else, I mean, looking at properties that have been on the market and that have fallen in price, and that was a direct result of, uh, in my opinion, it was a, a, a result of higher, uh, interest rates. That always has a negative impact on the real estate market, uh, just because homes are harder, uh, are more expensive, right? Your, your, your monthly payment is about the same for a much less house when your interest rate goes up, and it doesn't have to go up that much. So I, and I, I'm not, uh, and the only reason I bring it up is I wanna make sure that we're making the right decision here. Uh, it, it does appear to me, and I'm not the expert, and I'll defer to experts, but, uh, it does appear to me that this might be a spike. And it might, and we have other things in playing on it, right? More recently, within the last year, was the interest rates.
So I'm gonna defer back to our Nimerick. Um, people that we pay. So, um, go ahead. Well, you know, it's, it is true that what David said, it's, it's somewhat of a market based upon categories. And it really is true that the C L A is not an indication. It's a common level. It's not the level of assessment. They're not the same thing. And I haven't looked at the numbers per se, but I'm sure that they're, they're definitely much less than the, the ninety-four that the indicator, because these sales go back to twenty nineteen. What the state's been using, the cert, the certification for, they did it last year, was as, as of December, which included the April first, twenty twenty-two sales. That's how far, that's how far in the rear that, that number really is. And the, the purpose of that has been in the past is to determine when a town had to do reappraisal, and it is the adjustment for your education tax reform. Those are the two functions of the common level assessment. That function will not go away. It will not go away at all. So.
I would just respond, uh, anecdotally.
Yeah, I don't, I don't wanna get into a debate though.
This is, this is, this is good information.
Okay, okay.
Manchester just finished reappraisal. The ink dried, April first. The common level of assessment right now is seventy-seven percent based on sales since October of twenty twenty-two. So they're, they're supposed to report a hundred percent as of April first. The sales from October forward to date, they're at seventy-seven percent. So they're gonna have, they spent two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. In two years, they're gonna have to spend two hundred and fifty thousand dollars again because they're gonna get the letter from the state. You drop below eighty-five percent.
That one's gone away. It's gone.
The C O D will go. They're the same thing.
Yeah, here's a list of some of these sales, and it's, it's pretty impressive. It's pretty impressive. Well, I know that, I know that we, we just changed our, um, lister, the way we do things in town. This is our first full year, basically, on.
With a contract and something.
With a contract and something.
About having like a board of listers.
That, that's right. So, so our, um, the way we do things in town has changed drastically in, in eighteen months, you know, give or take, right? So, um, I, I think I'd be more interested to see, um, numbers on that versus where we were prior to what we're doing now. I mean, I think that would be, and I'm not sure if you guys can generate that. It'd be interesting, you know, and I, I know Bob follows this a lot. I, I'd be interested to see what those numbers are. Wouldn't you, Bob, from when we changed to, to the Nimerick?
I don't, I don't think you're gonna see, no, because the only thing I'm doing every year that changes values is looking at permits or going to somebody's house when they say, hey, can you come look at it? We want a, we want a reassessment. So it's, it's not like a reappraisal. We go out and look at half of the properties in town or all of the properties in town.
So you're, you're just doing the grievance.
Correct.
Okay. You can't, you can't change the base to come back and do a reappraisal.
Right. So if I go to a person's house and data says this, and I think it's this, or if I look at a sale, it sold for two hundred thousand dollars more, I can't go in and just be like, okay, well, I gotta try to hit that number, or I gotta change things that make, don't make sense because somebody else did it differently.
Okay.
And that it, it has to be done at a reappraisal.
Okay, that makes sense.
Yeah. We don't chase it.
I, I think to Bob's point, you, you definitely have a, a, a decision and options, frankly. Uh, you can opt to, uh, put an R F P out for a reappraisal at the very earliest, uh, convenience to the four vendors in the state of Vermont on the fifth. And they'll tell you their book through twenty twenty-seven, twenty twenty-seven. Those vendors usually take a year to two years to deliver their numbers. So now we're to twenty twenty-nine. So you can tell the state that you've put your, your, your thing in and do nothing if you want to till twenty twenty-nine. And, and there are a lot of towns that are doing just that.
Mr. They can't, you cannot do that.
No, we have to.
If you can't get a vendor, you're gonna go get done.
Yeah, I know, we have to submit.
If you can't get it done, you made your best effort.
Well, that's, that's for us.
The state will come in and do it one.
Right, that is, that's for us. The state cannot do it. They don't have the resource. So, so that's for, that's for the board to decide, um.
And I think we asked Nimerick to come to discuss whether or not it would even be an option for us to sort of, what's the word, um, appeal the need for an appraisal, or if we should submit a plan saying that we are going to issue an R F P and move ahead that way. I think that where they were trying to decide the best option.
And I just wanna be clear about the point that I was making earlier. Uh, my, my only point was that there's volatility in the market, and there's multiple things that are introducing the volatility. Uh, I, I can't predict what it's gonna do, nor was I trying to. I just wanna make sure we're clear on that. Um, um, and I'm, I have not decided whether or not we should or shouldn't do this. I see pros and cons on both sides. And as you often hear me say, there are no solutions. There are only trade-offs.
What's the earliest that Nimerick could, uh, perform a reappraisal on this town? Completion by twenty-seven? Twenty-seven. So you've got to twenty twenty-seven to make your mind up.
No, the state's gonna, no, no, that's not true at all.
But who else is gonna do it?
But that, that's nothing. The state's gonna require that a plan be in place, possibly within a month.
Yeah, we.
Right.
We're coming down to the deadline, for certain.
So I, I don't think you can appeal your number at this point in time. The, the, the numbers came out in December, and then they gave you like ninety days.
Well, yeah, to submit a plan, but it, it appears.
You need to appeal your common level of assessment. And that's not my point. That gives them twenty twenty-seven with the existing numbers to do nothing. Oh, yeah, that's true. That's true. Let's, let's acknowledge that. That's true, Dick.
And you, you submit your plan next week, you do nothing till twenty twenty-seven. And that is an option. And there are many, many towns in the state who are doing exactly that. They have no interest in sending out new tax bills to their taxpayers, and they're saying, at least we're not gonna have to do anything till twenty twenty-seven.
But if you're, if, I sometimes hear towns that they're considering holding off things, the market's gonna change. And that's a really poor choice because, first of all, who knows what the market's gonna do? I don't, I'm, I'm like, David, I don't think it's gonna see much of a change at all.
This is baseline.
It, it is. It's, it's a baseline. I think we would agree on that. And the state's just not gonna let you do that, and you don't need, because you just don't know. Right. Is there ever a perfect time?
If we did, wouldn't we be?
Exactly. We'd be going by it always.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
We'd all, we'd all be sitting here. We'd all be somewhere playing the market. We would. Not, not one of us. Somebody else would be here. I just finished a reappraisal in Milton a couple of years ago. I do a lot of radio, television stuff. One of the things I tried to get across to him was that in the forty years I've down there is what I've realized is I just don't know what the market's gonna do. Every time I think I know, it's, it does something else. So you just, you just kinda, kinda go with what, where, where it takes you. It's the only thing you can really do. So, so if I'm hearing, go, go ahead, Bob. Sorry.
Well, I'm sorry. I was just gonna ask, what, what is the normal, usual, I guess, best practice on cadence, irregardless of market? Uh, I, cause I think what I was hearing, and I'm sorry, I, I, we can't see everybody there, but our Nimerick representative. Um, uh, I think what I was hearing was the, it, best practice is probably to do it on a regular cadence and not try to play the market, which, uh, sounds reasonable to me. But, but also if you do it during a volatile time, then it becomes, uh, invalid quicker. Those are the pros and cons that I can see. But is there a best practice on what is the cadence of doing a town-wide, uh, reassessment?
There's none. And it's purely been based upon the triggers that have been put forth from the state from the C L A and coefficient dispersion. So, but there hasn't been, I work at Town and Shop, for example. So we don't, we're down there, is we do something every five years.
Well, but the trigger, I'm sorry, the, the trigger, the trigger, though, is, is when it's required, right? Not necessarily what is best practice and what would be the right thing to do. Just doing it on, on a regular cadence, regardless of whatever triggers there are. Because if you go too long without doing it, then you've got, you've got some people paying too much in taxes because their assessment's too high. You got some people not paying enough, and what's the fair share, and all, all those questions.
I did three towns last year, and two of them have gone sixteen years, and another one have gone fourteen years. And, you know, it's just too long. It's just too long. It just is, in my opinion.
Well, again, I would bring us back to, 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 to react to Dave. Uh, in the last two years, we, we, we all have to decide whether this is the new normal or whether this is an aberration, that to follow the period, it's all gonna go away, uh, and, and, and values are gonna come down. I think Ed agrees with me. That's not going to happen. That Vermont is a place on the map now that's a bullseye. And we're just gonna have to deal with it.
So, so that being said, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna divert to Jacob and Wendy because they were hand in hand with our, with our, um, grand list.
Right.
Um, what is your opinion on where we're at with whether or not we need a reappraisal? And I, and I don't mean to put you guys on the side.
No, no, I mean.
You guys weren't, you're, you're, you're our experts that.
Right.
I, I'm a boots-on-the-ground type of guy, okay? I, I respect David's opinion and what he does, and, you know, what I'm hearing, but I'm a boots-on-the-ground. You guys are here every, every day, or, you know, weekly or whatever. That's, and that's me. Sorry.
I, I think a lot of it is, I mean, going through, when, when you're doing sales validation, we look for whether we can call it a valid sale or not. And one of the things I've noticed when doing that is that you take a sale that sold for four hundred and the house is appraised or assessed at the town level at two fifty or whatever it might be, and you start looking at the data and there's things that are missing, things that don't make sense, there's things that could be changed to make it more equitable, and this place has got this for land value, this has got this, and they don't equal, they're not, they're not similar. Or I don't know how to explain it, I guess. It's.
So, so let me, let me ask you. If you have two similar pieces of property in Powell right now.
Right. Let's say they're right next to each other, and let's say this land grade, which is what we base it off of for the value of the land, at a one-oh is the average thing. Let's say this is one-oh, the neighbor is at a pointy. Why? What, what is that? Why? Why? Because they're exactly the same property. They're on the same land. They're just split by a boundary marker. You know? And it's things like that. You start to see, the more you look into it, the more you start to see like, okay, why is this one here? But this one over here is not that.
I, I think that's a historic.
And that's where the, that's where the equity thing comes into it.
I, I think that's historic in the town of Powell.
Yeah, I, I also.
I really believe that. I, I don't know about other towns, because I've never, I've never, you know, bought land in any, anywhere else. But I think, I think that's a historic problem that the town of Powell's had.
Well, and I think also, like, for, for example, just over, uh, on North Powell Road, you've got one house right next to each other. I think it's your son's house, maybe, has a huge rock in the back, and will have a completely different grade than his neighbor. Who is. On the rock. Yeah. So, um, yeah, so that's why it can actually be true that they are different grades and be next to each other, but it has to be double-checked.
Well, I, I mean, where I'm coming from, Wendy, is, is I'm coming from, um, you, you take a, you take a thirty-acre, or let's, let's go a ten-acre field, okay? That's relatively flat, seeing as, I can tell you the place in town. You take a ten-acre field, and it's split up into four houses equally.
Right.
And because this house A keeps a really nice yard, house B doesn't, house C so-so, but they're all built by the same person, and they're all relatively same. The land grades, the way they're taxed in town historically has been different because of ju- just different logistics out there. And I, I don't agree with that. I mean, this, this house, just because someone keeps their yard and mows their lawn every five days, why is it worth any more than, than the house over here that is, is the first, is the group?
Why are we punishing maintenance?
Well, and, but you know what I was gonna say, Bob, is I wasn't even gonna go to maintenance. But historically, somebody who were, were to say that's doing the pollinating gardens and doesn't mow their lawn, right? Because, because that's what they choose to do, not that it's wrong, and, you know, you don't even wanna get into some other stuff. You know, historically, that's been totally different in the town of Powell. I don't agree with that. I, I mean, I, you know, I, I think the fair and equitable thing is, is the way to go, but that's just me.
Respectfully, the Supreme Court has ruled against grading, uh, land based on open land, meadow, uh, mountain land, uh, tillable land because they go back to the definition of fair market value, and you can't leave that. Fair market value is what would a willing buyer pay a willing seller for this property irrespective of the rock, irrespective of the dimensions of the, the, uh, the lot. There are too many attributes that are being analyzed. And the attributes need to come back to what are buyers doing? What are buyers thinking? And if you ask a buyer, you say, well, gee, we checked in this town, we checked in this town, we checked in this town. We couldn't find anything. We would have rather been over in Stanford, but there's nothing there. So, you know, we're buying in, in Powell. Not only are we buying in Powell, but there was an auction at the purchase because there were other people who raised the price at the, at the, at the selling point. And so this price was five ninety-nine, selling price was six forty.
Yeah.
That's, that's, that's buying behavior, and, and I am. That's, that's buying behavior. And, and I emphasize that because that's where the Supreme Court lives. That's where they are. They don't care about attributes. They care about behavior. And that's why we have to take a more regional look at what's going on. We have to input sales data that reflects sales behavior and that will create a better grand list.
So, so I think what I'm hearing from our contracted assessors, Nemrick and, and Boots on the Ground and Wendy and Jacob, is that you're recommending that we send out an RFP for a reappraisal.
And submit that as our plan to the state. And I know Jim has some questions and he has his hand up. So I don't know if you want to have him ask now or if you want our public comment. But we did, I did ask.
I, I, I wanna, I wanna finish some board discussion first and then I'll make that decision. I'm not gonna get into a, I, I'm not gonna let Jim get into a huge discussion with, you know, maybe a couple of questions or something like that for.
I did ask him. We did ask him to hold us questions for when they were here.
That's right. So, and I, and that's right. I, I wanna make sure the board has ample opportunity to ask Nemrick any more questions and our representatives. So we definitely wanna give that, give that out to committee first. And does anybody from the board have any more questions for Nemrick?
Just a, I can see, so it's not just the, it's not just what will the market do? It's, it's, is the market stable, right? And, and from what I can tell right now, it's, it's not. And I don't know, and I'm not predicting that it's going up. I'm not predicting that it's going down. I'm making no predictions. But I, but you know, you're, you're often better off doing an assessment that's going to last longer when markets are stable and, and they've, they've leveled off. So in my view, and these, just Bob's opinion, we did have a spike because of COVID. And now we're seeing, we, we, I can think of two, I can think of at least two properties in Poundle that had to drop their price in order to sell. And they were pretty high profile properties. They were on the upper end. So, so those things are happening and we don't know how long interest rates are gonna stay up. We don't, and, and I'm not trying to predict it in any way. But there are pros and cons to doing this now to get everybody on a level. But there's also pros and cons to doing it when a market is stable versus doing it in a volatile market. So, because it, it won't last as long, right? You, you go through the expense in a volatile market and in a, in a, in a year, eighteen months, it's no, things have changed. So I, I just wanna throw that out there and I'm not sure how to assess those. I'm no real estate expert by any means. And so I, I'm not sure how to assess those, those pros and cons.
There's a bit of caution there. If I, if I could just throw a little bit of caution in the wind there. And I, I think there's a perception among property owners, especially with the escalation that we've had in the market. David, you could back me up on this, is that we can ask a lot and maybe we'll get it. And I, and I don't know that the market's spinning at the angle that it was, but I think it's still going up. And so if I think I can give a million, why, why don't I ask a million? The, the market value may be more like nine hundred thousand. But if I can get a million, I'll take it. So I, I, I say that because I've seen that in my own town, in the town of Calles. And I've seen a couple of those that were having like that. Still more than, they're, they're, they're gone up a lot more than what they assessed for previously. And they went up more than what they were asking, but they didn't get what, you know, they had to come down twenty-three thousand dollars to get to what was a reasonable number. And I just, I'm not saying it happens a lot, but like I said, I think the market's steady. I think it's still increasing in a lot of ways for a lot of types of properties. I think the high end properties, there's a tendency to ask more than maybe, to see what we can get.
Oh, that, yep, that, that, all of that makes sense.
Well, I think it's, I think it's good to be our job as a board, you know, and I, and I'm not, I'm not prepared to vote yes or no on a reappraisal at this point.
I would like to hear more.
I don't know that we have a choice.
What is our timing? What is our timing?
I don't have a, I can go pull it out of my.
Well, I think they sent the letters and you get thirty days to submit a plan.
Well, no, it's thirty days to get the, the thing that you signed, basically, that we received it. Notice, I can't remember what it was called, but, and then, and then we have, I think, ninety days after.
And we just signed that two weeks, well, three weeks ago now, right? We signed that.
It's been, yeah, it's been a little while.
Because we had, we skipped, you know, our timing meetings.
So, I mean, we should start working on a plan.
Because it won't come to fruition until, you know, twenty seven anyway.
Right.
That's for delivery of it. They start working.
But that's right. But, and by that time, it will definitely be leveled off. Or collapse.
Do I have a better understanding of what it's doing?
Yeah. I mean, I'm sure that when the depression hit too, they weren't expecting that. So things happen abruptly.
What's the state thinking as far as like tax rate wise for school tax? Obviously, if property values have gone up fifty, sixty, seventy percent in some areas, is the state gonna be dropping their tax rate in accordance with that to stay about the same funding?
They did, they just did in Manchester.
That, well, that's what my concern is, is like if property values have in some cases doubled, like homeowners aren't gonna be able to afford double their taxes.
That wasn't it.
Well, no.
The problem, no, the problem was that, that Manchester's numbers were closer to reality than Londoners and Dorsetts and Westens and Sprattes. And they were gonna pay a bigger chunk of the state, their gold towns, state tax than the surrounding towns who aren't gonna reappraise. They have no incentive to reappraise because all of the money that they're raising goes to the state. They're gold towns. They're gold towns. They don't get anything back. So Manchester's the same way. And Manchester's going, well, no, no, we just did a reappraisal. Our people are paying, and so the state stepped in and they, they modified the state tax to Manchester, recognizing that it was unfair. The next step really was the Supreme Court. So they had to do it.
Wendy, do you have anything for Nemrick?
So my question is, if a house is appraised at five hundred thousand and then somebody purchases it for seven hundred thousand, does that automatically mean that the appraisal goes up to seventy thousand? No.
No, against the wall.
Okay.
That would be sales chasing.
All right.
Just because you have, I've been looking at that house for twenty years. I need that house. I'm willing to pay for over, and that's just not value. That's emotional value.
Seven out of ten houses in an area do it.
Yes.
It proves the market.
It proves the market.
So I just wanted to make sure I understood that.
You know, what just happened, we just finished Shawaw, which is a pretty high end market. And the values increased there by sixty percent. They, they went up a ton. But what, in, in the end, what happened is that their tax rate actually came down a dollar. Because the values went up for the budgets here, the best, the grand list went up, you know, sixty percent and the tax rate came down significantly. And people.
The municipal rate.
Oh, yeah. Actually, the, actually, the state rate came down as well. Because they, the, the changes were just so significant. And, and the common level, see, the common level was low and that common level goes away. And what happened, I could, don't like to have to explain how the state does their education tax rates. But the, the common level that they used after the reappraisal was like one fifteen as a function of, because the state doesn't time just the sales. So they came out one fifteen. So it was like eighty-five percent and it came out at one fifteen. And then adjust that tax rate accordingly. Because it went up so much, their tax rate, actually, even their education tax rate actually, actually came down.
Ed's absolutely right. The, the economy in Manchester. The rate, seventy-seven percent and the state has them at a hundred twenty-five.
Yeah, exactly.
Ed's, Ed's exactly right. That's, they're actually, the real number is seventy-seven and the state put them at one twenty-five. And they put them in at one twenty-five to keep everybody happy in the surrounding towns who were saying, huh, ours is less. So that above one number that they use significantly drops the education tax rate.
Right. It drops the rate and it's so that individuals would continue to pay about the same on their property.
That's in theory what to do, yeah. But. And I, I.
Okay, I just, no, I, the only reason I brought that up is I didn't want anybody interpreting that as a tax cut. It's a rate cut, but you're still paying the same amount.
It definitely is not a tax cut.
The municipal rate fluctuates. That's a good thing.
Yeah.
That's a good thing. If, if, if the assessments goes up, the same budget, the rates come down. Unfortunately, the state doesn't work that way. The state has a different system and it's more of a fixed rate. It does fluctuate a little bit with manipulation, but it's a fixed rate. So if the assessments go up, the taxes go up.
I thought they had to do it, the kind of the same, statutorily, the town of Poundle on our general fund, we're required to, to change our tax rate in order to meet the, the, the annual budget.
Your local.
And I thought the state did the same. They come out with the budget and then they're required to adjust their, that's not true?
Yeah.
All right.
Does the board have any, board have any more questions for, for Nemrick? Any more questions for Nemrick, Bob?
I don't.
I don't either.
Jim, I can give you, I can give you probably three to five minutes. Is that okay?
Actually, I won't even need that amount. First of all, oh, my name is Jim Kosis. I'm up the North Mason Hill Road. First of all, I just wanna appreciate the gentleman and unfortunately, your lights are not on there. But he's got the maroon pants on. He's all the way to the right of my, of me. That, he's very intelligent and knows exactly what is happening and is very informative. Number one is we have not had an appraisal, reappraisal since two thousand and eleven. It is time, okay? Lots of buildings have been built and, yes, we, I can look at Zillow too. But I'm not gonna qualify everything on Zillow at all because that is just one measurement, all right? The state has made this determination that there is a range out there that needs to be kept within. The school tax is the most important problem in any town because it is so high. And the state came up with this kind of measurements to help people with the school tax that they wanna make sure that everything is fair. I don't think things are fair in Poundle. And Mike, you just kind of alluded to that because there is historical issues that may be not correct, all right? I have found a few that I've asked to Wendy and to Jacob. And I, I just think that there needs to be a new reappraisal to make everything fair in town. I see houses that are being rebuilt on the same footprint. Who knows how they're being assessed because they're on the same footprint? They don't even have to put in a permit because they're on the same footprint. The tax rate, yes, it's not gonna double if someone's house goes up in price. It's gonna be about the same depending on any renovations that they did based on the bottom line. You take the, you, you divide it by the denominator, all right? And then there's just the investment, Bob. If I was gonna make sure that everything's gonna be perfect today, I wouldn't invest all my money today. I don't know. We can't make this decision based on how we feel everything's gonna happen. So.
Jim, I gotta, I gotta, I, I need a response since you called me out. I clearly stated that I have no idea what the market's gonna do and I'm not trying to predict it. That would be foolish. And, and in no way am I doing that. And, and, and as far as the Zillow is concerned, I shouldn't have said Zillow. My point was, I looked at two specific properties in Poundle that dropped their price in the last year in order to be able to sell. That's the point. Where I got their advertised price is not relevant.
And how many prices, how many houses?
Jim, do you, Jim, do you have, do you have any questions for the, the gentleman from Nemrick or Wendy or Jacob?
Well, there was basically one question, Wendy, that I asked yesterday, basically on the assessment and the tax bill that you sent me. I don't wanna bring it up tonight because I prefer not to. But tomorrow you can maybe get back to me on that one. It was just the parcel value versus the tax bill and everything like that. Otherwise, it's time. Have a good night, people.
Thank you. So I think, I think, you know, we as a board have, have certainly gotten some valuable information tonight. I mean, I, I have. And I, I'd like to see our timeframe. I mean, if we have to make a decision tonight, one way or the other, then, then.
I think the only decision really was whether you were going to try to fight the order to reappraise or just go ahead and issue an RFP, which to me, it sounds like we should likely issue an RFP. Even though, no, we will not have it done until who knows when, but we still need to.
Yeah, if it's twenty twenty-seven, we're, we're.
Is the RA three oh eight the thing they're talking about that they have to send in their plan?
No. Well, that, they will have to do that eventually, but not.
That's not the plan. That's not the plan. Okay.
And keep in mind, if it starts in twenty twenty-seven, it's not done till twenty twenty-nine.
Right.
That's a two year process.
Right, no, I understand.
You've got a big, big window.
I understand that.
Yeah, they, they would be looking at data that would start in two years if they're only looking back.
Well, the earliest you're gonna start is twenty twenty-seven.
No, 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 I'm talking about the second.
The state only goes back like three years worth of data.
Well, you can forget that now because you've got the letter. They, so they don't, that's irrelevant now. You're either gonna move forward or you're gonna just not do it.
What's the board's plan?
I'm thinking we're probably gonna have to do it.
I say do it.
I would like to know how, if we were to pull the trigger today, a, a good estimate of when the, of, of when it would actually get underway. Understanding that it's a two year process, if it were to start in twenty twenty-seven, then we probably should pull the trigger now because, because we haven't had an assessment since two thousand and eleven. That's why I was asking the question of, I don't like, I don't like guessing the market. That's not the right way to do things.
Right.
But.
You got a three year window.
But, hang on, just, but the, well, exactly. But, but the, but the point was, and I wish I knew, what is the right cadence for this? It's probably more than once every ten years and we're past ten years. So we're probably past the point where we ought to do it, probably, but I don't know. No, I, I don't, I don't think we really know what the best practice is for just going forward. And then we ought to, and if we can find that out, then we can just get on a schedule and do it periodically without regard to market. And just when that time is up, we then do it again in ten years. And I know all of us will still be on the board then.
International Association of Assessing Officers, and they set the standard for that, which has been adopted by the state of Vermont. And that best practice is six years, every six years.
So we're, we're way past.
Yeah.
So, so unless I'm mistaken, unless I'm mistaken in what I'm hearing here, right? We send out an RFP now, right? We, we as a board, vote, vote to send out an RFP. That reappraisal will not even start until twenty twenty-seven.
Right. It, it depends on who submits RFPs. They will tell us when they can accomplish.
Okay.
Send out an RFP with specific dates at this point in time?
Right.
Right.
Let the chips fall where they.
I would ask the vendors when they can do it.
That's a, that's a, I mean, it's a fair, it's a fair, it's a fair assessment for this board to assume, and I don't like to use that word, but there's, there's a very good possibility that it wouldn't start until that twenty twenty-seven.
That, no, I think you, I think you can find somebody that would start before, maybe twenty-five and twenty-six.
Oh, okay.
I, I don't think you could.
But I guess, so, so where I was going with this is the last one we had is two thousand and eleven.
Yeah.
So we're, we're twelve years in now. You were telling me, you know, I heard you say that you did two that were sixteen years and one that was fourteen years. We're, we're gonna be at that sixteen year
Right.
level even a year from now or two years from now, we're, you know, not even twenty twenty-seven.
We will.
We're, we're out there fifteen years, give or take.
Time will go forward, but.
We're gonna be one of the towns that they use as an example.
We're gonna be saying that, oh, I was in a town not too long ago, and here fifteen years ago, you know.
Remember them?
Days from the order, we have to submit the form RA three oh eight. We have till December twentieth. And they want, it's a detailed plan, detailed compliance plan.
They're looking for an agreement or contract by then.
Yeah. So I think we should.
I would say we should probably have an RFP drawn up.
So we don't have to vote on that? We have a hundred and fifty.
No, I'll just, I'll come back with the RFP and you can vote too.
That's, that's what I, that's what I was hoping for. Okay. Nice. Okay. That's, that's what I was.
I'll bring it to the next, to the next regular meeting and then, and I'll make sure I have Wendy and Jacob's input on that.
So our next regular meeting will be the twenty-eighth?
Yes.
You have it ready for then?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
I already have Tom. I already have, um, templates from the LCT and
Right.
because all the towns are going through.
Well, I just, I, because we have.
Things, so.
We have the time. We have a little bit of time. I didn't know if that was going to give you, um.
Well, you are overloaded.
Probably give, um, at least probably a month for submissions, so we want to get it out like right after the twenty-eighth meeting.
Okay.
It's done.
Okay. Alright. I think that's all, you know, it sounds like we're heading towards an reappraisal, but, you know, she was just.
What's that?
Perfect.
Thank you guys for coming in.
Good night.
Thank you, everybody. Nice to be here.
Thanks for your time. Thank you.
Yes. Good night.
Good night. Thank you.
Thank you, Jake. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Okay, um, updates from town officials. Uh, let's, I don't have a whole bunch of, um, things we had. I think we, we haven't had a board meeting since we had the Board of Health meeting, have we? We had a Board of Health meeting a couple of weeks ago. Um, anyone who's interested can watch that on, uh, YouTube, um, zoning, just normal stuff, permits. Um, a pile of questions on a lot of different things going on in town over the last, um, couple of weeks. Since our last meeting, just normal permits, garages, um. I did have a question today from a business owner, um, who, um, wants to expand. Um, and I want to get into it because he's, um, not ready to file a permit yet, but it's a fairly large expansion for, for his business. Um, which is exciting, to be honest with you, um, encouraging. Um, I don't think there's a whole bunch more zoning stuff going on. That's, that's about it for as far as that goes. The health officer stuff just never stops.
Have we had any apple kittens yet? One. Tomorrow's the deadline, so if anybody would like.
For the health officer?
For health, yeah, one for health, um, and then just one for zoning, so.
Tomorrow's the deadline.
Tomorrow is the deadline.
Yeah. So, that's about it for me. Thanks. We, although, you know what? We've had a couple of public hearings. Um, one of them was for, was for a permit for a business, um. The other one was for a subdivision, so. That was happened last week, Hannah?
Yeah.
Yep. That's it. Um.
How are they doing on, uh, Mont Anthony Road for the culvert replacement?
Well, um, they're, I think they're back working now. There was a holdup on, uh, I believe there was a holdup on one of the pieces wasn't built or I don't. To be perfectly honest with you, Brian, I haven't had a bunch of time to talk to Joel on that and he hasn't reached out to me.
I didn't know if he had like sent the updates or anything.
No, not that I know. He's, you know, uh.
I do know there was some tree work, that kind of, um, mustwood and stuff too.
Yep, storm damage and all that.
Yeah.
Yep, yep, storm damage, everyone having, you know, held them up. And I know there was, I know there was, um, some, a holdup, I believe, on, on something that was, for whatever reason, wasn't available or wasn't made or whatever. And I'm not, and don't quote me on that, I said that was, like I said, um, other stuff in town right now. I haven't even talked to Joel hardly at all, to be honest with you. We talked, um, we talked last week about a couple of different things, but it was not that, so. Okay, right-of-way permit discussion and approval.
Um, so you all saw the right-of-way permit and policy that Hannah, um, worked really hard on with Joel and Darcy. I believe they combined the curb cut permit with that. And that is all because, or all stems from, um, I'm sure lots of people have seen the, um, different contractors around town installing the fiber wires.
Yep.
Um, there were, you know, they aren't, they aren't very well marked or they aren't marked for the, um, they're actually working for Consolidated Communications or Fidium Fiber. And it's not really clear when you see them out. It, it can be rather alarming because they're in yards and on the side of the road and that kind of stuff. So that prompted us to come up with a permit and a policy so that in the future, hopefully, um, companies will come to the town to, to just, um, acknowledge that they'll be working within our right-of-way.
Yeah, Joel, we, Joel and I talked about that back probably, this has been a while, right? We've been working on this a month or better, probably five, six weeks. He, they were working on, um, Putting Stone. You know, that we just spent a lot of money last year, blacktopping and there was no, you know, he pulls up and they got a four-foot hole next to the road and he was very concerned that, you know, hey, wait a minute, who are you and what's going on? You know, there's, you know, you know, if you destroy our road, where's your insurance and that kind of stuff? So that prompted this, um.
I'm surprised I don't have to check.
Just for clarification, when somebody like the employer is doing a big job like this, would they have to fill out a separate permit for each different road they're working on just because they've been all over the places? And therefore they could just say that they're working?
They could probably list the roads on it.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I would, I would have seen, I think it's more from, from what Joel and, you know, I, I didn't discuss it with Darcy, but I know he did. I think from what they were looking at is, you know, if they're, if they're digging down North Powell Road and they hit one of our sewer lines, you know, um, wait a minute, who is responsible for this? It's not the town of Powell. We shouldn't be, you know, they should be. But if we don't know who it is and there's no, no, you know, insurance on record or anything like that, so that was the big concern, you know, the new blacktop, um, on Putting Stone is what prompted, you know, this discussion.
Um, Joel just texted and they are setting the culvert tomorrow.
Oh, nice. Thank you, Joel, for that update. Brian, thank you for the question.
Yeah, my problem.
Yeah.
Yeah, my, my wife will appreciate that.
Yeah.
Everybody that lives up there will appreciate that. I know that, I, um, you know, I know that storm that we had that came through, you know, there was, there was some pretty major concern. Uh, I know some of the residents, um, that live up that way, um, cut the road out all the way down to the culvert in case emergency vehicles had to get there without the town even, even having to be the ones to cut it out, so. Um, just, just for that, you know, and, and, you know, we dodged a bullet, there's no doubt, you know. Thank God for that, for sure. What's your, um, what's the board's, um, any more discussion on that right-of-way? What's your pleasure?
No, I think it looks nice. Nice job, Hannah.
I think it's very well written. I think it covers.
Covers everything, yeah.
We're probably never going to cover everything, but.
Well, we're pretty much.
We got a great start on it, that's for sure. And, and, you know, I think it's something that we need. That's right.
We're moving forward.
Think it's something we need, for sure.
Absolutely. Do you want a motion or?
Yep, I need a motion.
I make a motion that we accept the town of Powell right-of-way application. Is that what you want to call it?
Hmm.
It's our.
Policy.
Policy.
Yeah, right-of-way policy.
Right-of-way policy.
So the motion on the floor?
I'll second it.
Any more discussion?
Uh, just a, a quick question. I don't remember. Was there a, was there a fee associated with the permit?
Ten dollars?
Just the ten dollar. That's what the.
That was my only question.
That's what the curb cut permit, I think, used to be, or maybe it didn't have a price.
It didn't have a price, but we reached out to, you know, some D and they recommended charging a fee to select administration, um, processing fee.
Okay, and just, and, and just so everybody's aware, I believe this is the same initiative that, uh, uh, that our, our CUD representative was talking about, right? It's the Fidion, uh, consolidated, uh,
Yes.
rollout of all of the cable.
Yes.
High-speed internet in the, in the rural areas.
Yes.
Right, and I, and I think, I, I want to make one thing clear too, Bob, I'm glad you brought that up. They have not caused a problem.
No, no.
Okay, there's been, there, we, we have not had a single problem in town reported. Um, that, that is not the reason for, um, that is not the reason for this, um, for this right-of-way. It's, it's more or less to get, you know, if you have a fly-by-night operation coming in, you know, to get, to get an insurance, you know, on the, on the books in case something happens, you know, it's just, that, that's all it's for. The, the, the people who are doing the work are very professional. Um, they're, you know, they're a professional to Joel. Um, you know, it's, it's, it's absolutely has nothing, it doesn't stem from any problems that we have had.
Okay, and that's good, that's good to hear.
Yeah.
Sorry, I interrupted the vote, so.
No, 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 we're still on discussion and that's, that's the perfect thing to do, right? I just wanted to make sure that, you know, people were well aware that there has not been a problem and that's not the reason for this. Uh, I have a motion on the floor in a second. All those in favor?
Angie, I.
Bob, I.
Brian, I.
Mike, I. Nice. We'll pass that and put that in place. That does not have to go through the, um, that's not an ordinance, it's just a policy, right?
It's just a policy.
So that takes effect now?
Yep.
Okay. Just, um, welcome to Vermont sign.
Okay, so I sent you all the quote. I'm just trying to pull it up now.
So the quote is for one and are you suggesting that we replace both?
Yes, the one in North Powell is completely trashed, basically. The one, um.
Trashed because of age and weather.
Yeah, it's been.
Not because somebody trashed it, okay.
No, nobody trashed it, but it's just, it's not fixable.
One hundred percent.
Yeah, that's the North Powell end and then on the south end of town, it needed, it's just really faded.
It's faded.
They read it, um, and it's basically just going to replace it, um, or go right over the top of it.
Okay.
And that is per sign.
Everyone had a chance to see that quote and everything?
And we have the money.
And then there's pictures of proposed designs.
I don't know where.
Okay.
Yeah, so I, I think Hannah and I definitely preferred the white background on the sign.
So it's pretty much exactly the same as it is?
It will be exactly the same. Lucy actually made those signs twenty-plus years ago, so.
If you scroll down past an email.
Yeah, I saw that, yeah. Yeah, for some reason this isn't working, but it's okay.
What's the board's pleasure?
I make a motion to move forward to replace the two, um, welcome to Vermont from Lucy Minnelli for the quoted amount of one thousand seventy-two dollars.
That's per sign, correct?
Per sign. And hopefully they'll last another, uh, twenty-five years.
This material, the, the material is more durable, so it should last even longer.
Right. Yeah, I don't like the colored ones. It looks like.
I think.
You don't like that blue one?
Exactly what.
Looks like a circus.
Circus, yeah.
Should say, Brian and Bailey, I'm in a couple of those colored ones. Sorry.
No, I agree.
I have a motion on the floor. Did I get a second?
I'll second it.
Uh, motion on the floor to replace the two signs for one thousand seventy-two dollars each. All those in favor?
Angie, I.
Bob, I.
Brian, I.
Mike, I.
And so everybody knows each means two, two thousand one hundred and forty-four dollars, right?
Correct, and they're going to look exactly the same.
Yep. Nice.
Uh, any public comment, Hannah? No hands?
Nope.
I make a motion to go into executive section, executive session for contractual.
Well, a second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Angie, I.
Bob, I.
Brian, I.
Mike, I. Motion to command of executive for contractual.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Angie, I.
Bob, I.
Brian, I.
Mike, I. Um, the executive for contractual tonight was to, um, discuss terms for the contract for our cartographer. And there's no action to be taken at this time. Um, executive for personnel.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Angie, I.
Bob, I.
Brian, I.
Mike, I. I'm going to command of executive for personnel.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Angie, I.
Bob, I.
Brian, I.
Mike, I. Oh, is there any public comment, Hannah?
Not seen any hands.
No public comment? I'll entertain a motion adjourned.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Angie, I.
Bob, I.
Brian, I.
Mike, I. Thank you, everyone. Have a great evening. Good night, Bob.
Night, Bob. Thank you.
Good night, everybody.